Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to this evening's regular meeting of the Westerville Board of Education and ask the treasurer to please call the roll.
Mr. Byrd?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. French?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here. We'll begin this evening by going into executive session. This is for the discussion of matters related to personnel. I'd like to have a motion on that, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, would you please call the roll? Mr. Griffith?
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The board will now move to executive session. We're going to get our cue in just a second. All right. The board has now returned from executive session. The roll was called before we went into executive session, so we are now at item three on the agenda, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Item four on the agenda, board meeting minutes. This is discussion and approval of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on September the 22nd. We do not move and second and vote on the minutes. Instead, we just determine amongst ourselves by consensus whether there are any corrections, additions, or questions. With that, are there any corrections, additions, or questions? I hear none. We will move on. Item five on the agenda, it's the best part of the agenda, district highlights and recognitions this evening. We have two, and I will turn this portion of the agenda over to Vice President Tracy Davidson.
Thank you. I'd first like to invite gifted teacher Debbie Pellington up to the podium so she can introduce Emmy Renee. No, it's Reni.
Reni.
Yep. Sorry. Good evening, Dr. Kellogg, members of the board. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Emma Reni, a seventh grade student at Genoa Middle School who is this year's state winner of the Nicholas Green Distinguished Student Award from the Ohio Association for Gifted Children. Emma, can you come join me at the podium, please? Stand up here. Right here. Launched by the National Association for Gifted Children in memory of Nicholas Green, a gifted seven-year-old, the Nicholas Green Distinguished Award is granted to one gifted student in each state who exemplifies academic excellence, outstanding accomplishments in visual or performing arts, and leadership. At school, Emma has achieved academic excellence, not only with her schoolwork, but also her involvement in such activities as the National History Day Competition, Science Fair, and the Ohio Math League. Emma has also been a member of the school's energy education team, which placed first in the state last year as well. Outside of school, Emma is a competitive swimmer who hustled here from swimming to be here on time, who shares her love of swimming also by teaching others. Emma's poise, dedicated work ethic, animating spirit, kind heart, and leadership skills make her an amazing seventh grader in the Westerville City School District, and I'm honored to present Emma as this year's state winner of the Nicholas Green Distinguished Student Award.
Let's go shake our hands.
While you're going up there to shake hands, I'm going to read a certificate of commendation from the board and superintendent to Emma Reni. Nicholas Green Distinguished Student Award presented by Ohio Association for Gifted Children for demonstrating excellence and outstanding accomplishment in visual or performing arts, academic achievement, and leadership. We thank you for bringing honor and distinction to our district and wish you success in all your future endeavors.
Good evening, Dr. Kellogg. Oh, my voice is loud there, sorry. Good evening, Dr. Kellogg, Mr. Griffith, Dr. Nestor Baker, and all the board of education. It is my pleasure to introduce to you this evening, this is Bryce Wilson. Bryce is a freshman now at Westerville North High School. He is currently running cross-country and also participates in wrestling the program, but we were honored, before he moved on to Westerville North, we were honored to have him as a student at Walnut Springs Middle School and a part of our fishing club for three years. Bryce began his fishing club at his sixth grade year, began fishing, and this year his fishing club participation came to a culmination. On August the 3rd, actually, Bryce, along with nine other anglers from Walnut Springs Fishing Club, participated in the 2014 Ohio Junior Bass Federation State Tournament that was held at Indian Lake in Lakeview, Ohio. After six hours of competitive fishing against 74 anglers ages 11 to 18, Bryce was declared the first-place winner in the 11- to 15-year-old age division. Bryce caught a total of two fish with a total weight of 3.49 pounds, and he also had the big bass in that age group for a total of 2.33 pounds. Congratulations there, Bryce. As a reward for his accomplishment, Bryce was given some nice fishing equipment from the Ohio Bass Federation, but more importantly, Bryce will be representing Ohio and will be representing Westerville at the 2015 FLW National Guard Junior Bass World Championship Tournament to be held this August 2015 in Hot Springs, Arkansas. And so we're very proud of Bryce and his accomplishments, and we're looking forward to what he's going to do for, to do in the 2015 tournament as well. I did want to share one quick story. I'm a storyteller, sorry. One of the things that was really neat about Bryce's win this year that I want to show, it's important, and I asked Bryce if I could share this. Bryce did a great job in his sixth grade year. His seventh grade year, he also was on the state team as well, but when it came down to tournament time, he was still on the state team, but Bryce struggled a little bit. He was, it was a tough year for Bryce, and he struggled a little bit. He had some frustration, wasn't able to get the fish that he wanted to get, and you know, for those of you who've enjoyed the sport of fishing, we all know that there is some skill, but there's also a whole lot of luck involved. And so he wasn't able to make out as well in his seventh grade year as he wanted to and was pretty frustrated. Came back his eighth grade year, and this past May, we were fishing at a local pond, and I said, "Bryce, you know you're making state team again this year, right?" He goes, "Yes, sir, I know that." I said, "Well," I said, "here's the thing we've got to do." I said, "This year," I said, "we've got to let all those frustrations, all those anxieties have got to be pushed to the side," and I said, "You've got to believe in yourself and believe that you can, you could pull this off this year." And I said, "And I believe in you, and you can do this." And sure enough, he came away with the first-place win. And so it's just, it's a, it's a whole thing to teach us as a life skill, perseverance, and even something as simple as fishing can teach us all those important things about life. So Bryce, it's my honor to present you to the board, and I'd, congratulations on your, we're looking forward to this.
Okay, he's going to go that way. Certificate of commendation from the board and the superintendent to Bryce Wilson. First place, 11- to 15-year-old division, Big Bass Award, 2014 Junior Bass Federation State Tournament. We thank you for bringing honor and distinction to our district and wish you good luck as you represent the Walnut Springs Middle School Fishing Club, Westerville City Schools, and the state of Ohio at the FLW World Championship Youth Tournament.
Moving on in the agenda, moving on, we're moving to reports. This is item six. Tonight, the report for all of us to pay very close attention to is on the state report card. I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Dr. John Kellogg.
Thank you, Dr. Nestor Baker. Before we do, funny story. So at Fourth Friday, when we had the Fab Lab out, there was a young lady who spent probably close to an hour at the Fab Lab and checking all the information about her pathways model. And I remember turning to someone and watching her talk to all the adults, and I turned to someone and said, "I have a feeling I'm going to be shaking her hands a lot of recognition ceremonies." It was Emma.
It was Emma?
Yeah. So she's an outstanding young lady making a fine impression. So on that note, tonight is a great opportunity for us as a, as a leadership team to start taking a look at our performance on the state report card. So I'm going to walk us through that this evening and with probably some more detail than maybe we've done in the past, but I think it's kind of necessary as we roll along. So with that said, tonight, there's really three things I'd like us to take away from this about our results and what we're doing. First one is, as you'll see, there's been consistency of performance across a number of years for our school district, and that's, that's something to, to keep mind of when you think of all the shakeups and changes that have gone on in this district specifically and across the state, and to be able to maintain at least a consistent level of performance in that atmosphere is pretty, pretty critical. The second is that in many cases where you see changes in how our performance is graded or presented, it is more about a change in the accountability model than it is about our change in performance. In other words, our performance seems to maintain a pretty steady performance, but the way we get graded and viewed by the accountability system has changed, or what the standards are, the target performance are, we're going to see keeps changing, and that affects how we're viewed. And the last, the most important thing to us is, what's our, our strategy, our approach to the results? And this is where I want us to be pretty thoughtful, because if you recall, a year ago, we engaged the community in a discussion about the school district. We went through strategic planning, we identified key themes. One of the areas we talked about was student achievement. And if you look through that information, and we'll do that as we walk through this tonight, you're going to notice that if you go back to those original documents, there was no comments in there that said, "Improve your performance index, get better at gap closure." They're implicit in what people want to see, but they weren't specific to the numbers. And really, I think the difference is, the state's accountability model is all about measuring your performance and against what policymakers think is important. The strategic plan is about what our community wants in terms of a comprehensive education system that enhances the opportunities for kids and separates Westerville as an outstanding community here in central Ohio. And I think that's the difference. One is about enhancement and being a top-notch school district. The other one's about measurement and accountability. And so as we go through our response, our strategic planning, and balanced scorecard, we'll take a look at that. So this is the front face of the, Jill's going to get nervous behind me because there's some technology in here that's going to challenge me, believe it or not, and so I heard her, I heard her get a little nervous back there. If I click at the wrong time, it's all going to explode. This is the front page of our report card, and you'll see there are six graded areas we're going to talk about this evening, and this is what's on the state. This is open to anyone in the public, so feel free to follow along at home or do it on your own free time. There are six areas that are measured, six components to the report card grade. They are achievement, gap closing, financial data's not part of it, progress, graduation, two others that are buried underneath the bottom of the slide, K3 literacy, and prepare for success are the other two. So we're going to go, we're going to drill down to each one of these, actually on the live website that the district, that's on ODE, so that's what I'm going to drill down to. So we'll look at each of these components as we go along. Notice a couple of things. There's an overall district grade that's coming in 2016. Each of the six component grades has the coming in 2016. This is coming attractions, so we don't have component grades or district grade yet. We have measurements in here that have, some of which we've had before, some of which are new. K3 literacy will be a new one we're going to look at that we didn't have before, and some of the prepared-for-success components. So this is still getting fleshed out. The first and most important piece about this we need to remember is, all the data we're looking here tonight are based in OAA and OGT. All the data moving forward is based on the new accountability system, the new assessments. And so the thing that makes me most concerned in this is I'm trying to guide the district on some academic goals at a time period in which we're really not sure what the real ruler is going to look like. And so we're going to set benchmarks for performance based on an old ruler with a new ruler coming in, and that's going to be a little bit difficult for, so, but we're going to walk through it. So, that said, I'm going to now attempt to transition from this static presentation to the live website, and thank you to Jill Beck and the tech team for helping me do this. And what is it I got to do, Jill? I got to hit which button? I'm honest about my deficiencies. The magic of the internet. Every superintendent in the state has chosen to do this at the same time so none of us can log in at the same time. Pretty very similar to the online assessments our students will take in the spring.
Good, John, that, yes.
Sorry. Let's dive down here first into the achievement. The achievement component is simply a measure of how many students met the benchmark, and there's two in here, is the performance index and indicators met. These are two we've seen before. I would tell you that performance index for me is one of the, one of the few components of the report card that still has a lot of meaning, and I'll show you why in a minute, and then indicators met. So let's dive down, you can click on here and dive down in the data even more. I'm going to, I'm going to focus over here for a minute on performance index, where we got a grade of B, 85.8 percent. Our total performance index was a 103, and I'll show you some trend data in a second. The performance index is really a measure of all the kids and what category they scored in on the state test. So you get bonus points. If a kid scores proficient, you get one point for that, for that student. If a student scores accelerated, you get 1.1 point. So they total all this up. The best you can get is 120, so 103 out of 120 is 85.8 percent B. I like to point this out, this is about more kids passing tests at higher levels. The only way you can improve your performance index is move kids into higher level of performance on the test, all right? So it's an achievement measure. This is our, this is how our calculation went. You can see that the vast percentage of our students, 57, almost, yeah, about 58 percent of our students are scoring at accelerated, advanced, and advanced plus. So they're scoring really, really well. About 29 and a half, well, not about, but 29 and a half percent are proficient, and then here's what, what's less than proficient. So we have most of our students scoring in the top end range of this, of the, of the test. That's good. Trend data. I don't know that I'd mark a 102.7 last year to 103 this year as a marked change. I would say that since 2010, rising from 100.8 to 103 is more significant. So we're in the right trend data there, more students scoring at high levels. The interesting thing to me is, with green as it, at advanced, we have 36.2 percent of our students scoring advanced. Back here was 31.5, so we've had significant increase, 5 percent increase in number of kids going from scoring in advanced over those couple of years while the, and there's accelerated, and in the proficient, we were at 31.6, has been on decline. The reason it's been on decline is because they've all been scoring up higher in here. That's good. So as teachers understand the standards and can line instruction to the standards and understand what's going on, we can do well on tests, but it takes time. That's part of the story. So that's our trend data on, on the performance index. Again, I like this measure because it talks about more kids scoring at higher levels on those tests, and I think that's a good measure. The other side is the indicators. This is one of the places where our performance is less than last year. We were 24 of 24 last year for 100 and an A. The difference, last year, the, the performance target was 75 percent. It's now 80 percent. So we missed three of the targets this year, and I'll talk about our performance there in a little more detail. Here is the three spots. We missed two in, in fifth grade. Fifth grade math we missed, fifth grade science we missed. Here's the heartbreaker. Eighth grade science we missed by three tenths of a percent. Yeah, that one hurt. All the other places were scoring well. So you can look at, so this is by indicator, you can do comparisons. So here's third grade, us. This is us. This is similar districts. This is the state average for third grade. And I point this out because I want to dive down for a second to fifth grade. Fifth grade, there were, I changed, yeah, fifth grade were, where we missed two in the indicators, science and math. Well, in math, we scored a little bit less than similar districts. I don't know that that's statistically that different, 77.5 percent to 78.2 percent. That's not a big difference, but I'd like to outperform other districts. We did, we did better in reading against similar districts. We're exceeding the state average. Science is a bit more concerning, but again, that's about a 2.2 percent difference between us and similar districts. So trying to get a look at the two fifth grade numbers and what those mean. It gets a little bit more interesting, we can go to eighth grade and take a look at that science piece as well. So eighth grade math was the other one, and you can see, excuse me, it wasn't eighth grade math, correct? It was seventh grade math? Eighth grade, eighth grade science, thank you. Play along, this is good. You can see we're still better than similar districts. Again, not statistically that big a difference, but we missed the benchmark. Take a look at some trend data. I want to, I want to point out something in fifth grade. So if you look at the trend data for fifth grade, now this is apples to oranges. This, these are currently sixth graders, but last year in fifth grade, it, clearly their performance dropped off from previous eighth, previous fifth grades, right? I want you to take a look at their, that group's performance when they're fourth graders and third graders. So here they are in fifth grade. If I go to fourth grade, they were fourth graders this year. Well, their performance that year, reading 93.6, math 87.9. That's pretty good performance. Let's go to third grade. Third grade, math was 89.5, reading 88 percent. They go to fifth grade, last year, their performance declines against previous fifth grades, and their performance declines against their own previous performance. Now, there's, there's differences there in tests, but that's what it seems to, as we digest it, trying to look at causation, we've talked a lot about, we did a lot of changes in curriculum in that year and how well, how much that disrupted the system could be a factor, because it appears to us that the kids declined in their performance against previous fifth graders and against their own performance. So it could be a function of our teachers' understanding and adaptation to the new curriculum. It could also be a function of just the test. As I showed you though, we did pretty well, we, we still fared well against state averages. So these are the kind of things we're trying to look at, about what is in the system that that affected students' performance. So, and the story will get even more interesting in a few minutes when we talk about their progress scores and value added. So these are some of the things you can do in there. So those are the two achievement measures. B, B, performance index up over the last couple of years, holding steady, more kids passing tests at higher levels. Our indicators, we missed three. The standard went up to 80 percent. We're still pretty close on the three that we missed. There's a fifth grade storyline in there that's kind of interesting as we dive into and talk to our teachers and principals about what we need to do there to improve that performance. Questions about either one of those? It's a lot. Anything in there you want to see?
Now that you know how to work it?
Now, I got it worked out. Okay? So let's jump to the second measure, progress. This is different. This is the growth measure. You'll, you'll also, you'll hear value added, you hear progress, you hear growth, it's all the same thing. This is, did students on average gain a year's growth in their academic learning, all right? So if a kid came in, reading the second grade level, did they get to the third grade level, all right? Or did they do better than that? We knocked it out of the ballpark here. There are, our overall grade was A. I don't want to move around a lot because then you feel like you're on a ship at sea going up and down. Gifted students' score was an A. Value add for our, the two that I find that make, make me feel most proud of our performances in terms of students in the lowest 20 percent in achievement. So the bottom 20 percent in achievement had A for growth, meaning they far exceeded a year's growth in a year's time. And that's how you close gaps. We've talked about that before. Same thing with students with disabilities. So we'll start to look at their performance on achievement, and we'll see, we're not where we want to be, but what we see is in terms of their growth academically each year, we're having good growth. You might recall last year for gifted, we got a C, which is always hard to explain because a C for progress means they met average growth for those, those students. So a C is average, and people struggle with that one because gifted isn't average. Well, it's a C for gifted kids, so it's average amongst gifted kids. Like, we'll be gone. All the children are beautiful and intelligent, and that's, that's what that one is. So those are our overall grades for gifted, excuse me, for our, our progress scores. Then you can break it out over here by grade levels. So here it is, by fourth through eighth grade. You do not have value added for third grade because there's not enough test points in their history to create a growth score, and you don't have for high school yet because they don't have it for OGT. So these are growth scores by grade level, and the numbers are insignificant, the colors are significant, all right? So let me be dangerous. Do you see the interesting story in there after I talked about fifth grade? All right? So fifth graders missed their mark on achievement but knocked it out of the ballpark in terms of growth. So we had a group of kids who underperformed on achievement against previous fifth graders, underperformed on performance based on their previous performance, but their teachers moved them beyond a year's growth in a year's time. I'm still struggling with putting those two together. We will. The one that's most bottom to us is the sixth grade one. This red means they were less than a year's growth, and that's not what we want to see. We have two years of that in our trend data that we want to take a look at. So this is an area we're going to talk about in terms of where we're at. Overall, though, a lot of green, that's good. That's why we have all these As over here. So our teachers are doing a nice job both in terms of achievement and growth. We have pockets of places we want to look at, but overall, we're doing a nice job where we're at right now. It would be my, my piece on that one.
Yeah, it's across the spectrum. That's really good. Oftentimes, a district is very good at one or another, but not necessarily across the entirety of the spectrum. So when you see that whole list of As, especially moving the gifted from a C to an A, that speaks remarkably well.
Anything else on there you want to see or questions about or that I'm not explaining well? Okay, now the technology's going to get really tricky because I'm going to go back to a presentation and out of here before I come back to gap closure. So Jill's going to come over here and guide me. Thank you, Jill. So I want to talk about gap closure, but before I do, on the report card, I want to contextualize this a little bit, and there's a couple of things I want you and to see, and feel free to answer questions, ask questions. There are three measurement areas in gap closure. Gap closure's about, well, it'll come as we go on. There are three areas of gap closure. It's the reading scores, math scores, and graduation rate that they use. So it's narrow in scope in terms of curriculum and what they're measuring. There are, there are more than nine subgroups on the state definition. There are nine that count in our school district. To count, you have to have more than 30 students in that subgroup. So there's one of the 10 subgroups that we don't have 30 students in in the district. I think it's Alaskan Aleutian Islands, something along those lines. All the other subgroups, you'll see that we have more than 30 students in each of these subgroups, and so they all count. So three measurement areas, nine subgroups, total of, really, you can think about as 27 subgroups, right? Follow the math? This is how the grading system for this metric works, and I think this is And I think this is important to see. I'm one of those people that, if you put a letter grade on something, I want to drill down and understand how it came to that number, okay? I'm the guy who asks the mechanic for the party replacing your car to make sure it really was broken, right? Each measurement area has a performance target. Last year, the performance target for reading was eighty-four point nine, math eighty point five, graduation seventy-eight point two. Now, the first thing we should notice on this is, the, on the performance, on the, on the indicators, the target is eighty percent. In gap closure, the target is more than eighty percent for the subgroups. It's an interesting phenomenon. Each year, according to Ohio's ESEA waiver, the target performance goes up. In reading, it climbs, climbs one point five percent, math two percent, graduation two point three percent. So these numbers last year, I'll go up by a factor of this for this, for this school year, okay? And they go up every year till 2018. Actually, graduation goes up to 2019. So this is a function of Ohio's ESEA waiver. It's the waiver from the ESEA federal legislation. So that's how, that's the function. So we're chasing a moving target. You've heard me say that before. That's the moving target. Here's how you earn points towards the graduation metric. You get a hundred points if you meet the performance target, meet or exceed it, or if the amount you improve in that year is more than what the gap is between your performance and the target. I'll show you that in a minute. It'll make more sense when you see numbers. So if you meet it, you, you get a hundred points. If you're, if you increase, the rate at which you increase is fat, is bigger than the gap between you and the target, you get a hundred points. I'll show you that. If you miss the performance target, but you get better, you get partial credit, right? It's like a math problem in school. If you show your work but get the wrong answer, you get partial credit, right? If you decline in performance or stay the same, you get no points. All right, with me? So let's look at some analysis. Overall, in those twenty-seven sub, subgroups, in eight sub, subgroups, eight of those twenty-seven, we didn't hit the target, and we actually declined somewhat in performance. That was our biggest killer in this particular measure, and I'll show you that a little bit. In six groups, our performance improved, but we missed the new part, performance target. So we, we got better, but we didn't get a hundred points. And I'll show you what that looks like. You'll get some numbers in a minute. So we got partial credit. I'm always interested to see how other folks do. So I selected two districts from central Ohio who both got Bs for performance in, for, excuse me, for gap closure. I wanted to see what their performance looks like. And this is what I found. This is for the reading, and the target's eighty-four point nine percent. I didn't give the names of the districts, but these are two districts. Both of these got Bs overall for their gap closure. And I want you to look at the numbers, and I'll show you how that metric works. So District One, in the previous year, they passed, pass rate was seventy-nine point nine. They improved last year to eighty-two point five, so their improvement was two point five. But their gap, right, between this and this, is still two point five. So the way they total the points is gap, improvement divided by gap times a hundred. And in this case, it's a one, so it's a hundred points, okay? Look at District Two, eighty-two point seven, improved to eighty-four point three, still missed the target, but they improved by one point six. So their improvement was bigger than the gap that remains. That's an automatic hundred points. Follow along? Okay? Here's Westerville. Made eighty point five, increased to eighty-two. So improvements one point five, our gap remains two point nine. We get fifty-one point seven points. That's why I have a problem with it. I'm not sure how these differences in improvements in gaps, I understand the math. What's important to me is the numbers, not the letter grade and the math that they've come, they've come about to do this. So that's the math. But I do think it's important to see it and its impact. Here's another example. This is for, I'm sorry, I should say, that was, subgroup is economically disadvantaged students. And in reading, this is African-American students in math, where the target was eighty-five, eighty point five percent. Follow along, see kind of same phenomenon. Here's the pass rates in 2013 for all three districts. Here's the pass rate in 2014. Here's all of our improvements. Here's all of our gaps. Here's how the points are totaled. We get seven point eight points for that one. I'm, I'm not convinced that these differences in pass rates and these gaps should line up like that, but it's not my metric. Here's African-American students in reading, getting the target was eighty-four point nine. Kind of see the same phenomenon again. In this case, this district here missed by point nine and got thirty-three points. They're actually outperforming that district, and they got a hundred points. So this is what I say, there's a, there's a metric here to get you to a letter grade that comes on the report card that everybody sees and we've talked about. These are the numbers and how parts, parts of the points are calculated. We are accountable for our results. We are accountable for the data. We are accountable for moving all these subgroups as fast as we can. We're not doing the job we need to yet, and I know our teachers are working hard. A lot of change is going on, but I want you to understand this. Let me take you to one more level. This is the actual calculation of all of our subgroups for reading. AMO is the annual measurable objective. That's what this is all about, gap closure. Here's all the subgroups. Here's the number of kids who took tests. The, this is the number that scored proficient. These are alternative, that alternative assessments, et cetera. Here's the, here's the total number that were scored proficient, net proficient. Then here's last year's data. So this half is this year's data, last year's data, and there's those calculations I showed you. What I wanted to point out is, remember I said there are eight subgroups in which our performance declined? We got zero points, and, because we missed the target? Why don't you look at them? One of them was a subgroup in reading for Hispanic students. We declined in performance by four point three percent. Not an excuse, just looking at data, there's four hundred and thirty-eight kids who are in that group. Four percent of four hundred and thirty-eight. I don't know how statistically different four percent is when you're talking about populations going from four hundred to four hundred and thirty-eight. That's not a lot of kids. It's a decline in performance. How significant a decline? Same thing here. I'm sorry, we got a hundred points for this one because we met the target. Same thing here. We missed by point four. We declined in performance by point four and got zero points. So there's that fifty-three. Same thing in math. Our decline in performance numbers for those areas where we got zero points are all pretty small numbers, and they transfer over to populations whose N size is kind of small, too. All right? Graduation rate, when you're looking at these numbers in red, the numbers in some cases look alarmingly large. Again, though, this is a, a decline in performance of sixteen percent, but you're talking about a population that last year had forty-five, the previous year had forty-five kids, and the year before that had forty kids. Now, it bothers me that ten of these students didn't graduate, but that number is a bit exaggerated, because the N size is so small. I would say same thing here under multiracial, and same thing here under special education. These, these numbers aren't satisfying yet, but these numbers seem to be, they play out as, as, as big red flags against N sizes that are kind of small. So I think it's kind of important to understand these. So we got sixty-three points for graduation. There's nine hundred points total, a hundred for each one. That's how that comes out. So you can see in a couple instances where we are a hair's breadth. Let me take one. Look at Hispanic students last year. Okay? The goal was eighty-four point nine, we were at eighty-four. We missed by point nine. The target? We missed the target by point nine, but we declined in performance by four percent, so we got zero points. Ah, I don't know. So that's a pretty deep dive into the gap closure piece. But at least for me, and I'll, I'll take questions or thoughts before I jump to our data on the report card, but if there's things up here you have questions about, or I went too fast on, or didn't explain well.
Comments?
Yeah. You know, much along the lines of the last board meeting's discussion around curriculum and standardized testing, and, and how, you know, the state is, you know, driving these issues. I'm, I'm appalled by these metrics, not from the standpoint, standpoint of the school district's performance. I'm appalled by these from the standpoint of what I do for a living. And I see a mixing of two fundamentally different reporting measures. The first is performance metrics, commonly referred to as key performance indicators. The dashboarding performance metrics is a standard corporate approach to all kinds of different activities that, that we want to understand our proficiency on. There's another type of reporting that is related to continuous improvement. I am seeing continuous improvement metrics and performance metrics being blended together in these standards from the state, and that's an abomination. That is just irresponsible. You do not measure performance against proficiency against a moving target of a continuous improvement metric. They are two fundamentally different exercises in every Fortune One Thousand company in the world. Yet, within the state-structured system for reporting, we mash them up together, because it looks like we've had legislatures and people, legislators and people in the ODE that read half a book on performance measure metrics and half a book on continuous improvement, and didn't read the, the complete text for either one of them. This is amazing to me. When you start to see anomalies that cause a swing of multiple tens of points based upon a single decimal point or based upon a single person in the population, the reporting itself is fundamentally flawed. Nobody, nobody could come before us from the state and explain how this actually ties to performance at the individual student's level. This is very, very disappointing from the state. It's disappointing that it's going to track until 2018, because we have people that haven't figured out how to measure correctly. And, and to see these kind of swings, especially after the number of questions that we've gotten out in the, in the community on this, you know, people don't have the time to look at the raw numbers. Because when you look at the raw numbers, the outcome of the, of the grade is, is absurd, right? But, but the big number, or pardon me, the big letter grade is what's posted out there for everyone to go look at without this, you know, good deep dive and understanding of, of the, the mechanics behind it. There, there's tons of misinformation going out from a state that's supposed to be pushing us towards better academic standards. And, and they're publishing misinformation. I'm very disappointed.
And I would add to that, that, I was thinking, as, as Dr. Kellogg was explaining all of this, my thoughts were, yes, they're raising the bar annually, every year until 2018, who knows? And our kids are being tested, assessed to death. And, you know, hopefully, they'll take these seriously, but after a while, you get test, yeah, you get desensitized, you get test fatigue. And how seriously you're going to, after a while, you know, okay, there's one more test today. And then, of course, that reflects on our, our final report card. But they don't see it that, do they? Their, their fatigue, they didn't eat their Wheaties that morning or whatever, and, and I can't blame them. So we're, I guess, ODE and, and all of the powers that be that make up all of these rules and regulations sometimes have lost contact with the down-to-earth school children that actually participate. But we, next year, this year, are expected, you know, to be based on, you know, raise our bar again, our test scores.
We'll have the challenge of increased performance targets and new assessments.
Right.
So.
And we're being assessed and assessed this year.
So, and I don't mean to cut off, but I, I, I can return to the question. I just wanted to show that in this third calculation, yes, indeed, what's on our report card is an F. What was there last year was a C. What I said at the start was, I think our performance is pretty consistent, but the way they calculate and the way the grades determine, you end up with an F. And I'm not, I, I'm not satisfied with performance. Our, our, our numbers, we can get better and we will, but I'm not sure I'm, I'm not sure I'm a believer in the F. This is what's actually on our district report card. And the problem with this one, if you're reading it, it's, it's nice in that it's color-coded and interactive. The red bar marks that, that performance target. What doesn't line up is blue to blue. These are different populations. So in this case, our, our white students subgroup performed the best, and then Asian Pacific Islanders, multiracial. Here, Asian Pacific Islanders had the best performance, followed by white students. So these don't always, colors aren't by group, they're by which group scored the highest. So the colors stay the same here. And you can see that red bar, which will move to the right again, and what our subgroups did. And now you understand, with more detail than you ever cared to know, how that's all calculated. So I have pages of white notebook paper you can look at if you want to see my math. So this is an area we got to stay focused on, and I'll show you what we're going to, some of, you'll see some of that in our response in the balance scorecard. So I'm going to move to graduation rate. Okay? Graduation rate, we had two Bs, excuse me, B and an A. They now do a five-year graduation rate and a four-year graduation rate. So we had ninety point two percent, ninety-five percent. You can see over here, here's the comparisons. On our four-year rate, we trailed similar districts a little bit in our four-year rate. Our five-year rate, we did a little bit better than them. Our trend data, we had a little dip here in our fourth year. Since 2010, we've been on a pretty steady incline. And this is a one point nine percent difference. So how significant is that? If it's one of your kids, it's very significant. Statistically, not so much. So we'll talk about that. That's graduation. Questions on graduation? Let me say this. This is the most, one of the most important ones to me. This is what it's all about. The rest of it is just markers along the way. If a kid gets graduated and ready for what's out there, we've done our job. If they couldn't read at the right grade level in second grade, but I got them to graduate on time, ready for the world, we've done our job. K-three literacy is a new one. This is third grade reading guarantee. There's some interesting components to this one. The state is still having a little trouble. There's, there's a little conversation going on between the state, ODE, and school districts in terms of reporting the data, and whether or not what we're reporting is what they're, so there's not agreement as to whether or not, how accurate the data is. But this is what's reported on our report card. We have a C for this. The fifty-two point seven is not an F, it's a C. They have their own grading system over here someplace. Here's how it works. In the fall of two, let's see if it shows it better on this one. Yes, it does. So in the fall of 2012, which was the first year of the third grade reading guarantee, we gave the diagnostics. So in the fall, we checked the kids to see where they're at. Are they on grade level? And these are the number of kids by grade level, kindergarten, first, second, that were not on track and had those reading intervention plans that we put in place that school year. Lo and behold, at the start of first grade, so it's that same cohort, these kids are now on track. So sixty-four of the eighty-four are on track. So what you see here, which is kind of interesting, in kindergarten and third grade, we were killing it in terms of the percentage of kids going from on, off-track to on-track. In first and second grade, not so much. Where I struggle here is there are a variety of different kinds of assessments being used for diagnostics and for off-track, et cetera, and for identification. I'm not sure that everyone across the state has this all, all worked out the right way yet. So we need to take a look at what we're doing in here, what our assessment protocols are and how we're testing kids. So we're doing that. We've had, I sat in a meeting with our reading teachers the other day. A lot of good conversation about our reading intervention plans, the standardization of those intervention plans, how we're using our Miracor volunteers, all those things we need to be doing to keep this one moving along. This gives us some idea where we stand going into next year. But here's, so all this, we did, okay? Ninety-two percent of our third graders passed a third grade reading test at the, by the spring of their third grade year. The cut score for third grade reading guarantee is less than the cut score for proficiency. The proficiency cut score is four hundred. The reading cut score for reading intervention plan, and if I get it wrong, someone from the audience, correct me. I believe it's three ninety-four bar. So that ninety-two percent is a deflated number, because there are kids between three ninety-four and four hundred who So that 92% is a deflated number because there are kids between 394 and 400 who weren't proficient but weren't subject to third-grade reading guarantee retainment, okay? This is the more important number, whether or not those kids by the end of third grade could read on grade level. And that's pretty good. Not perfect, but pretty good. Okay? Questions on third-grade reading guarantee? Notice it says provisional data here. Another new one is prepared for success. There's lots of parts of this metric I like. But there's new, there's parts of it that I have questions about. So what they're measuring is, these are what we've typically seen and we talk about all the time in terms of kids' scores and whether or not they're college-ready. So not just did you get them graduated, but you get them graduated ready to do something, to go to college, be successful, and not have remediation, to have industry credentials who's who could walk in and have a viable job with benefits and livable salary that could raise a family. Those are the measures. And there's another one over in here that we're all used to seeing. ACT participation, remediation-free, SAT, all these numbers. And so I like these. Here's a couple of questions. What percentage of our kids, let's assume you take the ACT in the fall of your junior year, okay? Fall of your junior year. So arguably, you've completed a little more, a hairs more, than 50% of the high school curriculum. So what's the appropriate met the college, exceeded the college remediation rate if you're a little more than halfway through high school, or even three-quarters of the way through high school? So that's where I struggle a little bit with on here is, at what point are we testing these kids to say, hey, they're remediation-free or not, in that testing window? And what does that mean for us? So I do want more kids participating. I do want more kids remediation-free. I just want to take a look at how these numbers are being done and what they mean. Same thing with advanced placement. Let's take advanced placement score of three or better, 42.5%. I don't know if that's good or bad. What percentage of our kids should leave high school after four years having already completed college-level work and have credit for it? That's what the three is. What percentage? I don't know. So I don't know what the standard is for that's good or bad. I know we have 42.5%. I know what our remediation numbers, I think, I have to check myself, I need to double-check, and Mr. Reeves, if you know the answer, feel free to pipe in, that is this remediation rate based on our students who go to state colleges, and that's the number reported by the Board of Regents? Because a lot of our students go to non-state colleges, and we don't get reports through the Board of Regents about whether or not they had remediation, right? So if a kid went to, I'll pick my alma mater, Wayman Mary, we wouldn't know if they had to take remediation classes or not because they're not part of the Board of Regents' system. And so there's, I'm not sure what that number is yet. We've put some things in place, I think, the industry-recognized credentials. Hats off to those of you who are able to go to the, visit the Career Technical Centers. I heard those are really, really good. What we're doing with our pathways model, that's a place we can get at this number, as well as a dual enrollment number. Again, what percentage of our kids should be completing college-level work in high school? I get the drive, I get the numbers, I get the statistics. Kids who have been exposed to college-level work in high school and earned college credit in high school do better in college. Well, it's kind of a circular argument. It doesn't mean that every kid should take college-level work in high school and that will make them successful in college. May mean they'll be less successful in high school because you gave them work that was beyond their capacity at that point.
And so they're just measuring there. They're not giving us a particular target.
They're just measuring and reporting. And so, you know, and that, frankly, I'm okay with that. If you put a letter grade on here, like you do gap closure, it loses some of its meaning. But if you give me these numbers and we can strategize and think about it, I think it starts to make more sense in terms of driving what we're trying to do towards targets, performance targets. So this is a new one. I do like it because the end of the day, what's most important, when they graduated us, was there's something to indicate they're ready for the next level. And that's what these numbers are. I'll buy into that one. Okay? And so those are the six areas. There's no grade here yet. C, A, B, F, B, B. Those are our grades that we've read about. Okay? That's the data. What I want to do next, and I apologize it's taking time, but I want to go into our response and what our game plan is to go after some of these. So before I transition, we're okay here?
I'm okay with your report. I'm not okay with the methodologies. It sounds like something the characters on The Big Bang Theory would come up with.
If there's more than two clicks, I'll mess it up. So bring in, okay. I appreciate your indulgence in this, you know, as I said, this is about us determining what our academic performance standard is going to be for us as a system. So the communication to our staff, our teachers, about what, where we want to focus and to our community, that's where this is important. And I really wanted to look beyond just chasing numbers on the report card. So, as you know, we went through strategic planning process. One of the performance tools we're initiating as a leadership team is a balanced scorecard approach. And some folks may be familiar with that from business and industry. I am learning as I go, and I'll try and give it my best explanation as we go along. So a balanced scorecard for us is a system that has four components, and it looks like this. In our balanced scorecard, across the left-hand side here are four areas: student achievement, internal processes, stakeholder engagement, fiscal accountability. And it works like this. We begin down here with fiscal accountability. What are the resources, financial and otherwise, that we have in the system to put into the system to drive what's going on? So at the bottom line, this is kind of the, this is the old, we can't do that, we don't have enough money. Or we can do that, we have enough money. Or we need more money. Or we're not spending the money in the right place, right? It's about the resources you have and how you're applying them to the outcomes you want alignment. Stakeholder engagement is about us asking the community, internal, external, well, given the resources we have, what do you want the system to look like? And that's what, that's what our strategic planning was last year in those key themes, that whole piece about what they want, what they think our school system should look like. That should drive a look at what are the internal processes we have that align with these things, the resources we have and what the community wants, that we need to make sure are lined up to make it all work to get us to the student achievement outcomes we want, right? That's the, that's the design mode. Across the top, we're going to have dimensions that we saw from strategic planning, specific objectives that we're trying to do long-term, performance measures we use to see how we're doing, kind of our data dashboard. What are our targets for this year, which is the hardest part of all this for us? And then what are some strategies starting to develop? I will tell you that we're not fully developed across all components of our balanced scorecard. We're still in conversation, but the one we did really want to get fleshed out and get rolling was student achievement side, and to some degree, some of the internal processes. That's what I'm going to show you tonight. In future board presentations, as we flesh out the other components, we'll bring that to you. And you've seen some of that. Jeff LaRose, when he did his presentation, did that, and HR did. So we took the six dimensions from strategic planning and put them where they made sense against the framework of the balanced scorecard. So fiscal accountability, we have this one on financial resources. Stakeholder engagement, we had our community, parent, staff, all those pieces. The internal processes that we've looked at the most that came from strategic planning, what are we doing to support students' social, emotional well-being? We often hear that, that one of the barriers to student success is social, emotional issues, and that's, so that's in our balanced scorecard. It's not on the state report card. Learning and work environments are safe, nurturing, and efficient. Space kids are in, can affect their learning. That's on our balanced scorecard. It's not on the state report card. Who the staff are that working with our kids is really kind of critical. When 85%, excuse me, 80% or so of your operating budget is staff, that's a resource you really got to take a look at, where they're at and how they're performing, and whether or not we've given them the right tools, resources, and training to meet the needs of kids. That's a big one. Then obviously, that means students' academic success. So these are those six strategic dimensions we saw through the planning process we start to fill in. So I'm going to drive along the top. We're going to look at student achievement specifically. I'm pulling that part out. So under student achievement, we have an objective. One of the objectives, I don't like this one as much, but it's kind of, this is how we take care of the report card, A or B in all the components. That's our, that's our long-term objective. And I maintain that as long-term because underneath that is the change in assessments. I'd feel more confident in some of these if I knew the assessments was going to be the same, but it's not. So that's one of our long-term objectives. Performance measures under this one is the six components of the report card. It's a no-brainer, okay? So we'll continue to monitor those. Our targets, you saw them on the report card. Our goals, gap closure, C or better, K-3 literacy, C or better. Those are the only two we didn't have an A or B on. So those become our targets. The other objective, I like this one better, every student will be ready to transition to next grade level where graduate to college or career-ready. There's a lot broader then than test scores. Our performance measures in there include the performance indicators, what percentage of kids met the benchmark for the state test. So that's the fifth-grade problem we looked at. Our value-added, are we growing kids at a fast rate? Graduation rate, obviously. The prepared-for-success measures, how are we doing there? Making sure not they're just graduated, but they're graduated with skills. Under student achievement, under that, our targets for this year, these are our goals. Exceed that 80% mark in fifth-grade math, fifth-grade science, eighth-grade science. Those are three we missed. We want to get those. We would like to see that, remember that sixth-grade red band on growth? We'd like to see that to get at or above. We like our four-year graduation cohort to get above 93%. This one's not on the report card. 90% of our ninth graders earning five or more credits. This is a big one. I have, I have yet to find this, this is a difficult one for many school systems, the percentage of our ninth graders who, for whatever reason, end up credit deficient. Your graduation number is a cohort, meaning the graduation rate for the class of 2018, that's the current freshman, am I right? Started when they walked in the door. So if a ninth grader is credit deficient at the ninth grade and is retained in ninth grade, falls off the cohort, they're a dropout, even if they graduate, right? They won't graduate on time with the cohort.
Could you repeat that one more time?
So a ninth, when the ninth grader walks in the door, the clock for graduation starts four years. If that ninth grader is credit deficient at the end of ninth grade and doesn't catch up with their peers and graduates late, they don't count in your ninth, your four-year cohort. Now, if you get them done in five, they count in the five-year cohort. But if you don't get them done in five, they don't count in either cohort. We need our kids graduating in four years. There's no reason. The math is simple. Seven periods a day, you can earn seven credits a year. Four years is 28 credits. You need 20 to graduate. There's a lot of wiggle room in there for mistakes. We just need to be better at tracking the data and doing the interventions we need to do. So these two are really tied together. So what you have in there is something for everyone, right? Because back here, sorry to back up. Well, on the first one, we had K-3 literacy and gap. Gap covers all schools. K-3 literacy is elementary. That's middle, excuse me, that's elementary, that's elementary, that's middle, that's middle, that's high school, that's high school. There's something in there for everybody, right?
Little opportunity.
We have, at the district level, this is a district level, three very broad-stroke strategies. The design of these are purposeful to be robust enough that if we focus on these things, the tests will take care of themselves, all right? First one is we want to enhance and expand opportunities for our kids to access rigorous curriculum. We need to make sure that the curriculum is robust enough and varied enough that kids find places of interest. So the pathways model we put in place, beginning in middle school and feeding into high school, marks a place where we're adding curriculum that's college-ready, rigorous, but more interesting to more kids. So how we approach what we offer and what kids take, they need to be in a rigorous curriculum. Offering low-end curriculum for the sake of getting a kid a credit and graduated doesn't take care of the prepared-for-success side of things, right? That's what we need to do. Two, our professional development focus this year, and we've already begun this one, there are three things we're focusing on. What do we teach? How do we teach? And how we know the kid's got it? We need to stay focused on that. What we teach is the content, the standards. They've changed. We need time to really understand them better. We need to understand the implications for instruction, what is the evidence-based models for instruction we need to implement. And the third thing is, we need to have assessment information that's timely and tell us how the kid is doing so we can change instruction. I'll give you an example, the last one. I walked into a third-grade classroom on Friday. This is beautiful. Twenty-something third graders, all with their Chromebooks out, dead quiet. Teacher at her desk with her Chromebook out. This was the only classroom, I went to four buildings on Friday, this is the only elementary classroom where the kids didn't stop when I walked in and looked to me to see what was going on. They kept working. They were taking their reading assessment online. The teacher was monitoring their performance online on her, on her Chromebook. As the kids finished their assessments, they came up to her desk for a one-on-one evaluation, and they presented the teacher their running record. This is how I scored the last two weeks. And the teacher said, how did you score today? And the student told them, and they wrote in their book, and the teacher said, how did you score compared to last time? And the kids could see their own growth in their reading from that assessment. That's what this is about. Do we have the right instructional practices? Do we know where the kids are at so we can move them forward? So you can imagine what happens if a kid going backwards in performance or not going fast enough. We can intervene. But we have that data every Friday in that classroom, not just in March when we give the third-grade test. And then the third one is, we need to continue getting better-looking, analyzing the data on student performance, building strategy from the district level all the way down to the classroom. The superintendent should be able to monitor our progress in terms of reading scores for third graders, just like three third-grade teachers at Huber Ridge can get together and look at that performance for the last week. And the system has to be aligned that way. So using data analysis to look at performance and build strategy all across the system is something we need to continue building out. So those are our broad-stroke strategies. I like to believe they're test-proof. If we know our content, we have strong instructional approaches, we know where our kids are, we offer the right curriculum to kids, and we use that data to drive strategy, I don't care what the test is, we can move, we can move the needle, make progress, and do what we need to for our kids. Those are the strategies we're building into place. Underneath this, you can start to see at department levels, building levels, classroom levels, the strategies are getting more refined about what their particular strategy would be at that level. So from very broad stroke to what does that mean for me in the ESL department? What does that mean for me in special ed? What does that mean for me in my third-grade classroom? That's the idea. What's most important to me on this is, all those numbers, the fives, the tens, the nineties, right? Those are kid names. So the strategy has to be that, from a district level, I can talk about numbers, principals can talk about kids and their classes and their buildings, teachers can talk about kids, and they can talk about kids with those kids and their families. So we can move that, we can move the needle that way. It's about that. I want to talk a little bit about, let me back up before I transition. Anything on student achievement side that you saw, questions on, concerns, areas that you didn't align to you? Make sense, okay? Explain, okay? All right? Just a little bit longer. Want to talk about the internal processes one. I talked about human resource capacity. So we have this dimension, this is an HR dimension. Learning is driven by recruiting, selecting, developing, retaining effective skilled staff members. I want to talk a little bit about some of the pieces that are in here because I think these are a little bit different approach. It's a little novel, and I'm kind of interested in seeing how we deal with it. So think HR. Our first objective, I focused, let me back up, I said hi. We focused on instructional staff a great deal here because that's our bread and butter. All staff are important. This is, this is who we work for, instructional staff. And what we want is know that they're using evidence-based instructional approaches, focusing the whole child, and they develop, demonstrate the ability to work with our diverse student population. Those words are in the key themes from the community about the kinds of teachers they want. Give me a good teacher who likes kids, who understands the difference of kids, difference of performance, who teaches really well. That's what I want. So that's what we want from an HR department. Our performance measures, we're going to have a staff evaluation system that's got data in it as we move forward. We already have data from resident educator about teachers and where their skill sets are. We need to look at our hiring criteria and process to make sure that we're aligning what we want, whether it's technology skills, what are the screeners we can use? So already, we're making suggested changes to the HR process. about how we screen staff and the tools we use to get to some of these metrics that we want. The targets, we need to establish some baseline data. This is a new area for us. And some strategies, we're looking at, taking a new look at our student teaching field experience placements, our recruitment process, looking at networking with universities and colleges, and looking at our systems in place within the system. This Ventures for Excellence is a tool that's used to measure some of the teacher empathy and efficacy questions. Not content, not strategy, but how you feel about kids. And so that's a tool we want to put in place consistently to get, get that data as part of our screening. So we're already got some strategies in here to kind of get our HR department where we want it to be. They're looking at their operational policies. This is more just back, backside, looking at, you know. So we serve the building principals. We're trying to help them get the best teachers in classrooms. So how do we make sure that we're, we're supporting them? How do we lift some of the load off their back and send them what they need? And so we're looking at some of those processes to make sure that's what happened, and what's their satisfaction The third one, we need to establish baseline data. They have some strategies internally to their operations to help with some of that paperwork, all the efficiencies that you can lose in paperwork and screening, et cetera, looking at all those pieces. This is a third one that's again a little bit trickier. How do you analyze the capacity, the human resource capacity of your staff? And what we want to start talking about is, can we look at that in regard to student performance? Give you an example of what that might look like. We've talked about third-grade reading guarantee in our numbers. So in the elementary division, Barb Wallace and her team meet with the reading teachers. These are the Title I and other reading teachers we have who provide interventions for those kids. And they are about the professional development that those reading teachers need to make sure that they can deliver the interventions we want, the evidence-based intervention systems we want to move those kids along, and the data systems that we need in place to understand where the kids are at. So that's the idea. Here's a population of people that we have hired, reading teachers who have a specialization in reading. We need to make sure we deliver professional development to their skill set so that they're able to go out and do that the way we want. Let's not just make an assumption that we've got someone with the skill set. What is it we want? And engage them in conversation about what's working with kids. So it's a, it's a, there's discussion back and forth between those teachers in the class and what they're seeing, and what we understand as being evidence-based solutions to where those kids are. It's that kind of approach. We have struggled with performance and with our limited English proficiency students and our special education students for years. That's where our biggest gaps are. Okay. What do we know about the skill sets, the allocation of staff, the resources they have, the instructional materials they have, the curriculum they have at those levels for those kids in those classrooms? If, we need to engage those people in those conversations to find out professional development needs, instructional needs, technology needs, what can we do to move them past their current performance? That's what this objective is getting about, looking at their resource. It's not about them not being skilled, it's about us paying attention to helping them do the job the way we think it needs to be done. So this is an area, we got to develop this one in terms of how do we measure that? What does it look like? Our targets, we, so beginning areas, we talked about that fifth and sixth grade. Let's have a conversation with those teachers. They know their performance. Let's have a conversation with them about what they think the factors are. Let them tell us, "Hey, you know something? These instructional materials we have aren't really cutting the mustard." Or, "We didn't really get enough time to dive into the, to the, to the new curriculum to really understand it. We need more time on that new curriculum." "Hey, we're looking at this evidence-based research model for interventions. Can we, can we place that out?" We need to get them engaged with us purposely towards those performance areas. I mentioned ESL and special ed. What do we know about their training background and experience? Hiring in special ed and ESL might be the most difficult place we have. And retention there might be one of the most difficult places we have. Add to that, the aides, most of which are associated with these two programs, might be the most difficult employees to keep on the payroll and in those classrooms, because these are difficult assignments, challenging assignments. And we need to make sure that, you know, when we have that kind of turnover, it's not good for kids, not good for performance. So we need to take a look at that. And so we're just, these are new areas, but they're, we're trying to cut new cloth around how this might look. So this is some of the HR piece that we've looked at. So those are parts that we've kind of done. So really, in the response, there's the academic achievement side. Let's look at the report card. Let's make sure everybody's next, ready for next grade level. Let's have our targets. Let's start to look at the human resource capacity we have, the training, the resources, the materials, the skill sets they have, what are their needs? Engage those people in conversations who are associated with those groups to see if we can't work with them to move the needle. And that's kind of strategy. At the end of the day, every one of those numbers is a kid with a name, with a family, that we need to understand. And at that level, it will be difficult for me, superintendent, to tell you who all the third graders are, but there are teachers out there and principals out there who know exactly who the seven kids in their building are that they're working with, and what those conditions are, and what those kids need. And we need to make sure we bring them in and, and address that with them. So as we look at all the other components. So like the balanced scorecard piece, I think there's other components of this that are going to flesh out. When you start thinking about facilities, we start thinking about social, emotional. We haven't looked at targets there yet in baseline data about kids being engaged in school. We know what a number that is. So a whole bunch of areas there that we need to take to get about the whole system. So I threw a lot at you. Consistent performance, change in the metrics, how do we approach this in a balanced way so that we're meeting our community's needs while still paying attention to what the state's going to grade us on? That's really the, the walkaway points for me. So I'm happy to take questions, comments, concerns along the way as well.
When I gave the legislative update, last meeting, meeting before?
Last meeting.
I promised my colleagues I would never speak that long again. So I won't this time. Just kidding. They didn't. But I didn't know that I would be opening up the kind of can of worms that I opened up from the emails that I've gotten and the conversations that I've gotten, kind of on this legislative side. The only reason I bring that up, and I took a lot of notes while you were talking. And it's, it is clear that in, in the state's report card, who was the politician that used to refer to fuzzy math? I can't remember who that was that used to refer to politicians using fuzzy math. The math itself is not fuzzy. I get that. It's X, Y, and here you have it. But I think my primary, I think my primary comment is, people want to know, people want to know that you want them to succeed. And when you create the kind of report card using some of the data sets that are being used, I fear that some of our frontline, really hard-working people in the classroom get the impression, "I don't know that the state really wants me to succeed here." It is way too easy for us to kick legislation and all. I, I'm not, I'm not about that. It's just not me. But what I wrote down, this is what I wrote down. Lucy and Charlie Brown.
Football.
Lucy would hold the football and try to convince Charlie Brown, "Listen, this time I'm not going to move it. I promise. This time I'm not going to move it. I promise." "No, you can trust me." And then, of course, she'd move it. I, I want good, hard goals and strategies. I'm, I'm good with that. And I'm hearing you say, "You are good with that." But the hard work of the teachers and staff and people out there in the front line seems to me to be discounted. When numbers are put up and you miss your target by .9, so you get zero points, and somebody else, and I wrote it down, hit their target by 1.7, and they got 100 points. So all I'm trying to say, truly, truly, all I'm trying to say about this report card is, I don't like at all the gap. I don't like at all the F. None of us like that. But it seems to me that we are here to help students behind the numbers, every kid behind the number, to feel like somebody is on their side wanting them to be better. And I would say that I think we want the teachers and staff and administration to feel like, "We, we want to help you do this." And again, the moving of the target, and we can just beat the assessments to death. We know that. But the moving of the target continually seems to me, period, unfair, unjustified, unreasonable, and doesn't add to the educational value of these children one whit. So I, really, I'm not going to speak much longer. I, 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 what I love about the balanced scorecard is that it came from us, meaning our community. And they said, "This would be a great educational system." So I, let's hit the marks. I'm, I'm okay trying to hit the marks. But do not discount what we've done to what it feels like you are discounting our people. It is our people that are trying to see our children succeed. And that is frustrating.
I'll take a chance and follow up. I would suggest, as, as you said, it's all about graduation, all about the graduation rate ultimately. Whether the kids catch up, you know, they're going to catch up at different rates, of course, because they learn at different rates. So graduation is one of our big targets. And, you know, the other thing I'd like to see them do, which maybe the state is not really doing, is follow-up. The career and technical aspect, they do follow-up for five years after a child graduates from a career technical school. They follow up. The teachers responsible call and see, what are they doing? Are they an entrepreneur? Are they in business? Are they still in the role that they graduated and trained in? We don't do enough of that to see if our graduates are successful afterwards. End of comments.
There are, and I've, I've used them, tools out there for graduate follow-up. I mean, they cost money, but they'll do that. And you can design those. There's a couple firms out there. And I would be interested in examining that at some point to, to see where our kids are.
Good. Thank you.
So I'd like to follow on. Rick, your points are really good. And I think that, I've emphasized this before, and other members of the board have it as well. The strength of this board is our diversity, all right? The backgrounds that we come from. Walking back a little bit from an emotional response to a, a, a series of metrics presented by the state that don't even reconcile with each other, right? When you move from one tab to the next, and the standard measure isn't the same from each tab to the other, there was no effort to even federate, you know, those, those data elements. That's just, that's, that's just mind-boggling to me. You know, for those that are here with us tonight and those that are listening, to put, you know, my hat on it from my perspective, I would have to say that in my setting, in the work world that I work in, if I hired a consulting agency to come in and set the governance, and the standards, and the metrics, and the framework, and build the reporting dashboard, and they showed up in my office, and they presented this, I would terminate that contract, and I would take them to court, and I would get every bit of my money back, right? And I'm not, I'm not saying that, you know, from an aggrandizement standpoint. I'm saying, that's the reality of the world that I work in, right? That, that's just not acceptable. On the other side, I'm, I'm happy with the balanced scorecard discussion. It is a much more reasonable and rational approach. It is local standards, which, and, and community standards, what I think is extremely important in the overall scheme of, of education in our communities. It does not let us off the hook, and, and that's a point that I wanted to emphasize. When I see 110 kids didn't graduate, that bothers me, right? In West Real City School District, when I see that, that we've got two full busloads of kids that didn't make it across the finish line, I want us to do better, right? I want us to do better in those categories that, that we need to be staying on top of, many of which we talked tonight, some of which we didn't, we didn't. I, I think that we have an obligation to the students, all right? I, I do not have an obligation to a state legislature that, that, you know, can't sort out a metric from one end to the other, all right? My obligation is to the kids in this community. And, and that we are making a conscious effort to still, you know, pay attention to the state metrics, but improve our school district in a way that's important to our community, I think is the key message here. Again, I'm disappointed. You know, I've, I've always told people, you know, "Look, if you don't add value, you need to get out of my way." As it relates to the state standards, the state assessments, the state testing, the state reporting and metrics, I'm not seeing a lot of value here.
Can I just add one quick? That's a great point about our balanced scorecard does not sell it short, does not let us off the hook, the whole economic, social well-being of the child, which is surely reflected in grading. So, Richard, that's, it's an excellent, excellent point.
My turn? It's so hard to go last, so I'm not going to beat a dead horse.
I've got nothing left to say by the time you guys are done.
Okay, sorry. I'm going to, I'm going to talk about the positive side. I am very encouraged by the strategies you have in place. And I like that it's about the whole child and student achievement. So we can be frustrated. We can talk to our legislators, try to change testing, try to change the scorecard, but I feel really confident in you and your staff that we're going to meet the kids' needs. So thank you.
Now, this, this is, and I, it's very difficult to be last. What was said, all I wanted to do is say, "Yeah, yeah, yeah," to everything that was said here. The balanced scorecard thus far is very satisfying, because it does deal with the multidimensionality of the student. It deals with the multidimensionality of learning and of teaching. And I very much appreciate that. It is sadly lacking in what the state has chosen to do. One of the things that I think is incredibly ironic, and I hope nobody paints me as a particular partisan of one way or another, because I never am, the whole idea that the target continues to change, year after year, we chase this moving target because that's required by the ESEA waiver. And yet, education is a function of the state. Education is not a function of the federal government. And yet, everything that we're chasing is because of the federal government. And I have a whole lot of problems with that. I actually have no problems with beating on legislation or legislators or anybody, Rick. We have some serious flaws in the accountability system in this state around education. That being said, we also have to work extraordinarily hard, do the best that we can to help meet the targets. Because as John was saying, those targets, all of those numbers are tied to children. And those children are, oh, this sounds inflammatory. Those children are in some ways held hostage by these metrics. Because if a child's family decides to opt them out of the third-grade reading test, that is one thing that, you know, we've always felt pretty strongly about in this state, that if you don't like it, there are ways around it. The only thing that happens to you if you opt your child out is your child fails. And you cannot go on to fourth grade because you didn't do the reading test. If you opt your child out of the high school test, the end-of-course exams, the proficiency test, whatever test comes down the pike, the park assessments, whatever it is, then your child will not graduate. Therefore, no matter how much I may rail against what the state has done and is going to continue to do until enough of us rise up against it, it has to be met as best we can for the sake of the children. While we're doing that, though, we are going to pursue exactly what Dr. Kellogg was showing you in the balanced scorecard. We are going to continue to pursue and pursue it hard, and I view it as our primary pursuit, making sure that what we deliver here is a very strong, very well-rounded education for the children and the families within this district. We have a lot of issues We have a lot of issues that need dealt with from a policymaker perspective at the state. We touched on that a lot last meeting, and yes, the response has been remarkable, of people who were so glad to hear us say the things that were said, to know that we feel the way we do. I hope that people don't lose the fervor that they themselves experienced from the fact that we spoke up. Please, continue to speak up. Every single person's voice matters. Every single person's experience matters and needs to be factored in, and needs to be funneled forward. We will do the best we can, we will work hard. This is a highly professional group of educators that work in this school system. They are working hard every day and achieving extraordinary performance in many ways. We've got a lot of things we can work on, a lot of things we can produce, but there is no way that this district deserves an F in anything at this point in time. So, I want to go beat up a few legislators. What the heck, let's have a good time.
Is that on the record?
That is on the record, but only verbally. Oh, I know, you know what was going through my head? Okay, spoiler alert, there will be a swear word. Benjamin Disraeli, it was always, yeah, put your, Pastor, cover your ears. Benjamin, it's usually attributed to Mark Twain, but I think it was really Disraeli that said it, it was Prime Minister in England. He said that, yeah, that's right, "There are three kinds of lies. There are lies, there are damned lies, and there are statistics." And that's what the state is functioning right now, Disraeli's third lie. So, yeah, that was, I was really upset about that. So, I'm done.
So, real quick, one interesting policy piece, the ESEA waiver that we're referencing here, you have to remember the policy piece, right? So, the ESEA is a federal statute. Ohio took the opportunity, because the federal government allowed it, to write an ESEA waiver, which was intended to relieve Ohio from the constraints of ESEA legislation. So, the ESEA waiver that we're functioning under is Ohio's response to taking away the burden of the federal government's ESEA requirements.
But it didn't take it away, it just spread it out.
They just modified it.
Yes.
In some form or fashion, so. And the last thing I'd say, and I'd be remiss, and I appreciate each of the board members referencing, and I need to say too, been here, this is my second year, 14, 15 months, go by classrooms. Everybody from the, from every walk of job description in this district is trying to do their best under the conditions that they're given, and our role is to make sure those conditions are such that they can be their best day in and day out, and that's what this is about. This is not about children who aren't, who aren't in the right place, in the right family, or don't have the right skill set. This isn't about employees who don't have, this is about us making sure the conditions are such that we can move these people on, because we can, we can. And so, I thank all of those folks through the organization, because that's been my observation, they're working hard to make kids successful, and I do appreciate that. So, if anything in my presentation sounded like less than, it's not. I know they're working hard, and oftentimes, they're more frustrated than we are with the performance, because they're trying to find their way through it. And we just got to make sure we have processes in place to engage them the right way, so I appreciate that.
You know, I think we have one last thing. I think anyone out there that has a question or concern, Dr. Kellogg would like to hear from you.
Right, John?
Right?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Absolutely.
Just to clear up misconceptions.
That's very good. That's important. That is important, because there is so much, and it is deceptively simple with the pretty colors and the grades. It is a lot to wade through, and if you do have questions, please do not hesitate to We're going to move on in the agenda, and this is the first portion of public comment for items that are on the agenda this evening. There is no one signed up for this portion of public comment, so move on in the agenda. Item eight, which is our financial section, we have nothing there this evening. That takes us to item nine, which is the personnel consent agenda for this evening. Could I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. With a motion and a second, before we do anything else, I would like to ask the board if we may vote separately on item 9.08. Any opposition to that? I hear none. With that, Gary is at the podium.
Thank you. I have no questions at all tonight. Dr. Kellogg has made it crystal clear what the expectations are. And I say that smiling, but I will tell you, you're fortunate to have a superintendent that lays that out so well, and it's very easy to understand what he expects and what it is we're going to do this year. And if you saw his notes today, one of the things in HR is to review the Aesop system. And you talk about our people that work for us. One of the things that I'm doing with that system is going out to seven different buildings and spending time with the secretaries, asking them about the Aesop system. And I had my first meeting today with Gabby over at Whittier Elementary, spent 45 minutes with her, and trust me, I learned more than she did. But again, the point is, I talk to the end user, and she shared things with me that I didn't even think about, so as we move forward, it'll help us with the input phase of that. And so, I'm looking forward to the other meetings we have this week and scheduled with other staff members. I'd like to draw your attention to the personnel consent agenda tonight. There are 11 items on the agenda. In 9.06, there are some adjustment to contracts, and most of those deal with adjustments we're still making with bus drivers and cafeteria folks based on work schedules and needs of students. Under 9.07, temporary assignments, most of these are classified positions, and again, they're temporary. You can see that many of these are filling in for a vacancy until we can move forward and hire somebody. Under one-time payments, there are four of those tonight, and again, this goes back to what Dr. Kellogg said with student achievement and strategies. There are four of these, ones related to Algebra II, one is a review of the Apex Content, which is an online software program, one is related to the preparation for Waiver Day in September, and the other one is related to the EdSite grants that relate to, again, student achievement strategies. I recommend these to the board for their consideration.
Comments or questions? I will explain why I've asked for 9.08 to be voted on separately. My daughter is listed in those teachers who are identified as receiving a stipend for their presentations on Waiver Day. The Ethics Commission is very clear that I am permitted to vote on any action that comes before the board, of which my daughter is part of a class. I think, however, that good, reasonable people could disagree on whether this group of teachers who is to receive a stipend is a class or is not. Therefore, since good, reasonable people can disagree, I am going to abstain on 9.08. However, in case you're looking ahead to various other votes, I will not be abstaining on those instances when she is most obviously part of a class.
Just one question, do you anticipate any more supplementals for the Waiver Day coming to us?
I would hope not. I believe that list that is before you this month takes care of most of them.
Thank you.
Bart, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. And now, 9.08.
Let me ask you a question. Do you want, do you need to do a motion and a second for this one as well? We typically do a motion and a second.
Yes. So, 9.08, is there a motion specifically on this one?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Sorry, I thought you were asking me to call a roll.
That's right.
You ready for the roll now?
Go ahead, yes.
All right, Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Abstain.
That has been approved, and my daughter will certainly appreciate the motion and a second. Gave her her Waiver Day stipend. Sorry, Kaylee. Moving on to policy consent. Policy consent this evening, this is the final reading under 10.01 of Policy 8210, which is the school calendar policy. You'll recall that we had discussion of this at a prior meeting, as expected. And at this point, John, do you want to have anyone discuss it, or shall we just discuss amongst ourselves?
At the last board meeting, it was suggested that we look at communication vehicles for parents regarding the number of hours, not putting that in policy where we'd have to bring it back if the state changed it. So, we're going to work on a communication piece for that through handbooks and the actual calendar itself, so that we can be clear about what those hours are at the various levels. I think Dr. French was the one who brought that up. So, we will do that. It's our recommendation not to make the change in the policy, because as you all pointed out, that would mean bring it, if the state, which sometimes happens, changes the rules, we'd be back revoting on, you know, if it takes 101, 1,001 for high school, and now it's 1,002, we're going to have to bring that back for that modification. So, if that's acceptable to you, that's what we would prefer to do, and so we move this forward. The other piece I tell you is, we have posted the proposed calendar that will be here next month, and we're collecting that feedback from the community. You'll get that in your update prior to the next meeting, so you can understand what the community's saying about the current calendar.
So, any, any early returns from the community yet? Because I know I was on the, as a parent, I got one of those emails, so I was curious.
I know we've been collecting them, I haven't spent much time diving into them, so I suspect what we'll hear is, my guesses would be, we'll hear a lot about the start date. What we have to understand is, the start date relates to when you can end the semester. And so, if you want secondary exams before winter break, that pushes things back. We already, right now, I think, operate with a differential of five days between semester and semester one and semester two. So, at the high school level, if you're teaching a semester course, you have five fewer days in semester one for the same course you might be teaching semester two, right? So, there, those differences, while they seem little sometimes, do impact folks. And I get it, it means we start, and it's interesting, the number date each year has, it went like 14, 13, 12, August 14, it's always the same start of the second week of August, but the number date keeps moving back because of the way your calendar functions. So, we are looking at those components, but those will be the challenges. So, we'll give you plenty of opportunity to see what the, what the feedback from the community is, and have some discussion about, and we also have, excuse me, the district calendar committee as well, that'll make some recommendations based on that.
I might just state that I'm still concerned that, I don't see any reason why we couldn't put the number of hours, minimum number of hours for each level of grades in here, because, you know, if the state does change it, so what? We come back and change our policy. So, I, I do still feel strongly that those hours need to be in there. So, that's fine. This vote against, if that's possible.
If you want to, you know, you are always welcome to move an amendment if you want to see, see how it flies. No? Okay.
No, I, I don't know if anyone else feels that strongly about it. I feel that if a person looks up a policy to see the number of hours that are in a high school level, minimum number, we can exceed the 1,001, of course, but I would like it to be stated as a minimum at both elementary and middle school and high school. So, and I see no reason why it couldn't come back to the board to be revised if the ODE does revise it, or, and I don't anticipate them, you know, they haven't changed their number of days for, how many years has it been, 180 days, you know? So, I don't know why it wouldn't be in our policy. And I, you know, that's my feeling as a board member, so.
My feeling is not so much that it should be in the policy, but I would like to see it in guidelines that are attached to it, so those, those don't require the timeframe to pass the policy to revise. But it would be, then, what should be in a policy then, is you have that, and then you say, "See guidelines for details," or something like that. That should, our guidelines should be more readily accessible, and people should be able to see those components.
That's unfortunate, they are not, yes.
Yeah, and I view those specific pieces as being really important in guidelines, so I, we're not differing at all on the fact that it needs to be more accessible, we're just different on where we think that should be.
Is a 180 days referenced in the old policy? I was trying to skim through this to see if the...
A while ago, there it was, years ago, yeah.
But I don't think it's included in...
It's not in the, in the one we're revising, I don't think, although it did have...
I mean, I know it's a well-known, we all know the number, seems pretty, I was just wondering if, okay.
No, it doesn't look like it's been in there for a while.
Whatever you, whatever you guys want.
Used to be, yeah.
Well, if, if there's a motion to amend, we'll certainly consider it. If not, we will move on.
Well, okay. Yeah, I'll make a motion to amend it, but then, do we get to vote on it tonight, or would we?
Yes. What would happen would be, there would be a motion to amend, and you'd say what the amendment is, and then if there's a second, then we discuss it and vote on the amendment. And if there's not, then it dies for lack of a second, and either way, we then vote on either the amended or the unamended policy.
Fine.
So, if you want to make the amendment, go ahead and state what the amendment would be.
Well, I would, I would put the amendment at the first paragraph there, that the board determines annually the total number of hours, and then break them down by what is required.
Okay, well, we would have to have the specific language tonight.
Yeah, I know, that's the reason I'm thinking, we can't do it tonight.
We don't have the specific language, we would have to bring it back. So, what you could offer instead of an amendment, if you want to see how it goes, is a motion to postpone.
Amend, yeah, all right.
Table made you remove it.
What, what, what might, and if, I may not understand this correctly, but if you put the minimum hours under state regulation, those minimum hours may not be the same as what your calendar as a board says. And so, you now may have two figures out there. What are the actual number of hours that the board approves per their calendar, and what's the minimum number that the state makes you have?
Well, no, we would have the minimum, minimum or greater. We would definitely, what was that? We would definitely have a minimum on the calendar, would we not?
Yes, but we might exceed the minimum.
Exactly. That's, I'm saying, the verbiage should be, and we don't have time to do it tonight, but it needs to be minimum or greater than 1,001.
So, if you want to, go ahead and motion to postpone, we'll just, the board will determine, because we haven't heard from everybody, we've just heard from me, basically, and see what people want to do. If people want to postpone, we'll postpone, come back with language. If they don't, then we'll vote, so. What do you want to do?
What if, what if on the document where you actually have the actual calendar days used all the days, why don't you just put a column on the bottom, minimum state hours, minimum what our hours are? Just put the columns on the actual document itself.
That's a good idea, John, that's a good idea.
Anyway, just put it at the bottom of the document.
That's what we have been, that's part of, been one of our strategy was, because annually, the calendar we adopt, which will always meet or exceed, but it may look different, so that's why I thought that might be the best place to do it.
Yeah, we'd have to bring back this policy each time.
No, you'd vote, you'd vote the calendar, too.
Next month.
So, every year, every year you're going to approve the calendar, and then that would communicate the hours.
You want to look at any, but they're going to look at that before they look at this.
Okay, I would make a motion that we postpone this till the next...
Well, there's two things, Gary. There's two separate motions. This is a motion for the board policy tonight, and again, the next two weeks, tonight, you're actually going to vote on the calendar itself, so it's going to be two things.
Exactly, right.
So, you don't have to have a part of this one if you don't want to, we'll just make it part of the other document.
Exactly, okay.
So, you can leave this one, the way it's presented. It doesn't have to be part of the board policy, unless you want a part of the board policy.
Add it to the calendar.
And then make sure the hours then are listed on that calendar that we vote on. That's what he's talking about.
Yeah, I, I hear you.
So, that could be in administrative guidelines, it speaks to the board's annual adoption of a calendar, which will include the state minimum hours by law, as well as the number of hours.
Yeah, the problem with that is that, if a person goes to look up policy, which I often do, and it's not there, the hours are not there... often do, and it's not there, the hours are not there, where else do I have to go, you know? So, yes, I gotta go look up the calendar, or I've gotta go look up guidelines or whatever. You know, I think that's just a personal feeling, but...
Okay. So, then, I am, I am now confused. Are you motioning to postpone in order for you to bring back the language that you wish to propose as an amendment, or are you not motioning to postpone?
I think you're motioning to postpone this because you want to look at it.
I, yeah, I would motion to postpone it, to rewrite the policy.
Okay. So, we have a motion to postpone until the next meeting? Is there a second to that motion?
Before a second, just a question, are there any ramifications to us postponing? Are we impacting any schedules, any timeframes, any communications?
I don't believe so, no.
Second.
We get the calendar voted on next?
Yeah, it'll be fine.
All right, second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on postponing the vote on this until language can be brought back to consider regarding the number of hours. Would you call the roll, Bart?
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, this will reappear on our next agenda. Moving on to item 11, for old business, we have nothing. Item 12, new business, we have nothing. Item 13, standing business, we have nothing. You would think, John, that we would have had a very short meeting tonight. Item 14 is public comments, and we have no one signed up for the second portion of public comment as well, but it was well worth it, your report was well worth it. That takes us to item 15, which is board comments. Have we more to say this evening?
Pass.
They won't let...
No, no.
No? I do!
You do, of course.
Okay, I just want to make everyone aware, Westerville Education Foundation recently launched their Gap Initiative website that supports innovation educational practices in our schools. This is fantastic. I encourage everyone to go out, and you can go to our website and pull up Westerville Education Foundation. They've got a couple ways to get money into the classroom. You can adopt a classroom, that means you can help out with supplies or magazines, you can fund a project. I know the media specialist at Walnut Springs just went on a week ago, she put a fantastic project up there where she's gonna have a, it's gonna be a club after school where they're gonna have a TV news crew, and they're gonna go around to the different clubs and the sporting events and report on them, and then the kids will get to see this around the school. So, and someone funded it, they loved it. So, we can help out, we can give whatever amount we want, a little or a lot. The teachers get to put out their, their wants and needs, and then they also have community opportunities where businesses or organizations can post opportunities for student internships or scholarships, so I just really encourage you to go check it out, it's fantastic. And I'll stop there.
Dates, times, and locations of next meetings. We will meet in regular session here on Monday, October 27, and on Monday, November 24, both at 6 o'clock, both at the Early Learning Center. With that, could I have a motion for adjournment, please?
Yes.
Thank you. The second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, would you call the roll?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, we are adjourned.